Take just a second.
Perfect. All right, we're streaming live now on YouTube. Rosie, I don't know, start it and then at least.
Pass it over to you. Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the first of October Camden Planning Board meeting on Zoom. Tonight, we have a site plan review pre-application meeting. Before I hand that over to Jeremy to introduce that, are there any comments? Or questions that people need to talk about that aren't on the agenda tonight?
Maybe I'll just add something really.
Seeing any gone. Yeah, so I will.
Um, I just.
Hand it over to you, Jeremy.
Yeah, we'll get the minutes finalized for the last approval. Because we need to get you guys to formally approve those too. But we'll get that done hopefully in the next few weeks to a month. For the wastewater treatment project, plant project. All right, so. For the ordinance requirement, applicants are suggested to. Meet with the planning board in a pre-application meeting. Where the applicant would generally give a summary of the project. And the board would raise any kind of concerns that the applicant should know about or thoughts. Before the probably submitted and formally gets through the goes through the review and approval process. And I think we got, you know, we got four members here now. We got Jeff and Rosie and Ethan and Mark. So I think we can move forward and nothing formally happens tonight, no approvals necessarily. I'm bringing in Matt Siegel right now as well. Hello, Matt. Going to unmute him. I have to unmute Jeff. Sorry, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Jason backup again.
I know, I will do that later. I'm at.
Hey all.
So we're just getting started, Matt. I just mentioned that we'll get some the minutes done for that wastewater treatment plant project in a little bit. Hopefully in the next few weeks and we can approve those forward.
Well, sounds great. Thank you, Jeremy.
So we've got two. Two projects or two pre-app meetings tonight. First one would be. Would be a review, pre-app review for Tom Headstrom at 24 Mount Batty Street. He's proposing to construct a new shop building for his electrical contracting business that's already existing on site. That includes the driveway parking area. And gravel work yard area on the property. And to do that, there is some filling required and and. That's for part of the project. So from there, I'd like to maybe introduce Bill Lane from Gartley and Dorsky. He's the engineer on the project. And he represents the applicant and Bill, why don't you take it from there?
Thank you very much, Jeremy. Are you gonna put up the plan by chance or?
Can you do that from there? Can you share your screen?
If you wanted me to take the screen or not, I don't know what kind of protocols you had for that.
Feel free to take the screen.
Okay.
Janice, can he take the screen?
Okay, so can you see that?
Hold on, no. Janice?
Yeah.
Can. How do we get Bill Lane to share the screen on here? You know?
It says all participants can share, so it should be just a click on it.
Yeah, probably not doing the second click. There you go.
Somebody's sharing something now.
Oh, now I've got your desktop.
Have you got a desktop desktop with a map on it? Have you got the other?
We got everything else.
Looks like your desktop.
Yeah, the Adobe isn't open.
Alright, so that's the other window then. Let me just get to it.
Sorry, we're looking at secret files you got right now.
It's gonna be okay, though.
So secret.
Got a lot of projects going on, Bill.
Oh, yes.
That's a normal day for Bill right there.
Gotta wait a little bit, I'm not quite there yet.
Interesting. Everybody on a blank page now?
Yep.
Is there a plan view in front of you now?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, thank you so much. Appreciate your patience, so. I believe that Tom may also join us, but. As Jeremy indicated, Tom Headstrom operates his electrical business from his property at 24 Mount Batty Street, which is also his residence. And he proposes to build a second building on the property, thirty-two hundred square foot. One-story building for primarily for his business. Equipment, storage and an outdoor storage yard as well. So we are on the west side of Mount Batty Street and this is the existing. Building that operates as or that supports his home and the shop. And behind the septic system, there's enough. Land if we fill to the extent. Indicated to support a gravelled yard for storage, parking for staff. And this new thirty-two hundred square foot, one-story building. So this building would be powered, would be provided electrical power and have a heating system, but it would not be plumbed, it would not have pressurized water, it would not have a sewer connection. And as indicated, this would be a fill in a wetland area, which would require a Natural Resources Protection Act permit, which has been filed and is in the comment period. And so that approval presumably when we were before you would still be pending. And. Is the river business district and including this amount of development. We are in compliance with setbacks, bulk standards. And as indicated, the, you know, the existing system wouldn't be, septic system would not be modified. Because the new building is is dry. Just for a quick finish, the property is bounded by the trailer park to the south and the west. And by the river to the northwest. Any particular interest that the board has and questions, be happy to discuss them. And Jeremy, I think you might have also. Had an outline for whether or not the board want to see the property, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, that's the standard thing that the board's been 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 doing about pre-app, about site visits.
Yep.
Is that the extent of what you wanted to go through, Bill?
I believe so, unless there's some specific questions. That interest the board and we'll we'll be assembling a site plan review package that we've. Got largely in place, so we'll probably be able to submit before the due date for next meeting.
I do have a couple of questions, Bill, just to clarify on the plan. The big red line that goes right through the proposed building, what is that?
So let me zoom in for you. Sorry about that. So we got flood zone line.
That's what the, I assume that's what that was.
Yep.
Okay, so we're developing in the flood zone. And creating quite a bit of impervious surface in Louisville wetlands. Are you gonna do any pre and post runoff?
Adjacent to the river like that, we were not planning to. It's gonna be inadequate capacity.
For the receiving.
Giving water and we're flowing directly to the receiving water.
And then the other question I have is the trees to be cut along the riverbank. What is the purpose in that?
That's an indication of. Stabilization activity that's actually. The subject of the same NRPA permit, and so that's why that annotation is depicted there. And Tom is actually really adamant about trying to preserve some of those trees, even though we've identified that they're possibly to be removed.
Is there, is there any way you include that work in this plan?
Can I, can I jump in here really quick? So there are a couple of things going on. That they applied for a NRPA permit for the soil disturbance, as well as for an armoring of the undermined severely eroded stream riverbank. That's going through that process with the DEP right now. Steve Wilson, the code officer, has issued a flood hazard permit for that stretch of that portion of this project. Of what Tom's trying to do here, and since really two separate things.
Okay.
You know, two separate projects because Tom's. Tom would likely be coming in for that permit to with the state and a floodplain permit to deal with that erosion. Without his project going on, I mean, that the erosion is quite severe and I know he's really concerned about it. He's some land there, so it is under review by the state, public comment periods is finalized. I've talked to Jim Byer at the state about the project a few times. About that that specifically, as well as some of the wetland filling. And they're going through that project likely to get their permits would, I would bet at any time. Steve Wilson has issued the floodplain permit already that was required to do that riprap work. Along that, the armoring along that bank. So I wanted to share that with you and in terms of flood. The project, obviously, since it's in the flood zone, does require flood hazard permit as well. So there's two kinds of things going on here. There was one for minor development for the armory, armoring of the bank. A second flood hazard permit is needed for the war, the filling in the wetland areas. The flood hazard or filling in the in the floodplain and wetland areas. The floodplain ordinance. Of the town, you know, Article two and Article three is the permit requirement section and the application. So they are going to have to submit a full floodplain application for this project as well. And since it's associated with this project, there's a provision in the floodplain ordinance. I think it's Article five. Oh, it's actually Article nine, which Review of Subdivision and Development Approvals, the planning board. So actually, the planning board will also, Bill, and just for your. Information, I don't know how deep you've gone into the flood ordinance, but the planning board does review the floodplain work as well under Article nine of the floodplain ordinance. Jeff, as we move forward. I guess your questions probably will be addressed, at least some of them. I don't know.
Separate set of plans.
But and so he's gonna have to do that and there's, they got it, there's development standards and requirements that they're going to have to do about the carrying capacity, because this is in a floodway. I got someone waiting here, Ethan. Ethan must have jumped off and now he's back. They do have to do an engineering study to ensure that. The what filling that they are doing does not increase the flood levels by a certain amount. That's going to be required and that will be part of, it's gonna have to be part of it. I was just reviewing the floodplain ordinance today and it's pretty clear that they need to do that. And then another question, just in relation to flood, I wanted to bring up. It wouldn't be a letter of map amendment, but Bill, I would assume you need to do a letter of map revision at some point with this, with FEMA?
I would expect so. And.
I'm just throwing that out. I'm just thinking about the floodplain issues.
Yeah, that that would probably be. Tom driving that timeline largely about. The considerations of insurance, things like that.
Yeah. Yeah. So just for everyone's knowledge out there, there's provisions, the flood ordinance is what it is and the flood study is what it is. FEMA, you know, prepares that and produces those documents. When you want to either amend the floodplain ordinance elevations because it, you know, for. I guess, physical characteristics of the site, a specific site, it might show that it's in the flood floodplain, but when you actually look at the elevations, it's really not. You can amend the map, the floodplain map, and that's called a Loma Letter of Map Amendment, but when you actually are changing floodway. You generally have to do a letter of map revision and I'm just throwing that out there that so Bill does that. And it would really just be for this specific property. It doesn't apply to the rest of the town's flood zone. Or. Our flood mapping. So I just wanted to, you just go over that since Jeff, you brought up the floodplain. So it will be reviewed as part of the the project. Moving forward. And then in terms of the vegetation on the tree, the tree removals.
Yeah.
Going through the shoreline zoning ordinance, clearly the canopies are already exist out there, right? You can't create canopies larger than a certain size. So we already have those canopies already open to that that size. So the shoreline zoning ordinance would require replanting of the trees that were removed. I mean, they're, he's not planting very large trees. You look at the standard and they're not huge trees, but they do have to get planted and maintained. And since we're removing, I think, three or four, we're certainly not going to ask them to plant them on the bank. You know, we don't want them to fall back in, but I think nearest the bank as possible because, you know, shading of trees is important to the water quality of the river and and all that. So you will have to plant a handful of trees as part of the revegetation.
If we could get that on the plan too, that would be awesome.
Yeah, and that this is important because this is what these pre-app meetings kind of bring up, I think, these kind of issues. Another one, Bill, Jeff mentioned the stormwater. In the Performance Standards Section of the zoning ordinance, there's provision on grading and filling and excavation. Talks about and it's part two, section one, three, A. And B, regulate stormwater. There is a question about twenty-five year storm frequency of two-hour duration. I certainly got to believe this site meets that requirement and you'll be able to prove that. I'm just pointing that out that that's a performance standard that's in the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I think it will, because you'd be surprised at the amount of runoff that comes off of wetlands, because it doesn't really absorb anymore.
Right.
Almost acts like a parking lot.
Yeah.
The only other question I was. Having was one of the trees is not native. And then I had one other question.
One of the proposed new trees?
Yeah, it's not native. It's the, I can't see it's behind my own face. But one of them was European, I think. The Mugo pine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've never heard of that. Heard of it and I've seen it, but I've never heard of it, you know, a native planting.
Yeah, it's just a dwarf species, but if you'd like us to research a native.
Nice, but it's not like you have to.
Say again, I'm sorry.
It'd be nice, but it's not like you have to. I don't think our ordinance. I mean, it's an ornamental planting you're putting there, so it's not like we really have much say, but it would be nice to see it local.
I mean. Yeah, I think it's a good point, Jeff.
Oh, it was the sediment barrier. If you could double the sediment barrier in that wetland right there, that would be, I think, ideal, just where the work is being done, not the whole thing.
Yep.
And that was it. Thank you.
And Bill, are we talking, when you say sediment barrier, we're talking wood waste, bark mulch, berm kind of thing?
My preference would be to use an ECM berm here.
Oh, then single's fine.
Okay.
Rosie's muted.
Oh, yeah.
There you are. Rosie, you're still muted.
Hi, sorry, can the jargon, EPDM berm, can you just unjargonize that for me?
So.
My apologies. Erosion control mix.
Gotcha. So they really just talking about what kind of soil, I mean, what kind of grass seed and things is going to be planted?
Well, the, the material that makes up the berm itself, which is a combination of wood waste and some soils.
Gotcha.
And Rosie, they use that as a erosion control sediment barrier. It actually performs much better than silt fence. Silt fence generally doesn't get installed correctly. It's hard to maintain.
Yeah.
You gotta deal with roots because you gotta key it into the ground. I mean, erosion works really well and then at the end of the day, you could just spread it out. And not have to remove it or disturb soil in or remove it.
That's my question. That's great. Yeah, way better. Thank you.
Anyone else with any thoughts? Comments?
I have a question on the application. On the application, it states that project area is fifty thousand plus or minus square feet. And then. Down below. Proposal is for. More than ten thousand square feet. There's a choice between ten thousand square feet or forty thousand square feet. So I don't understand.
The. The forty thousand is for residential, Mark? Within a five-year period, if that's what you're looking at, I think the fifty thousand is the area, the lot size, correct, Bill?
One point one eight acres or thereabouts. So.
So that would be the.
Oh, so that's just a lot size. That's not the actual disturbed.
Correct. We're. That's the lot size.
And Mark, that forty thousand that you mentioned is for strictly for residential projects?
Was that for dwelling unit?
No, that's for, if that's for grading and filling, if it's a residential project and you're grading and filling more than forty thousand square feet. Anyone else got any comments for Bill? Questions?
Good job, Bill. Tough project.
Thanks.
Time this evening.
Bill, can I, one thing I'd like to see on the site plan is like a development table. You know, of sorts, and maybe it's on the plan that you you're gonna submit or you've submitted to me already, that other one. Rather than this pre-app meeting one. But just a development table, what's the, you know, some of the setback requirements are and what stand, what your setback is. Lock coverage, what is required or what's the maximum and what what is proposed, those kinds of things. Parking is required by the zoning ordinance and what's proposed would be very helpful.
Okay. We can do that.
Your building design?
That's one thing that Tom was going to be able to address. As I generally understand it, it's going to be similar to the structure that's out there now, but more barn-like in character. So if you're able to visualize that, and we might have actually sent a couple of pictures along with, let's see if that's. If I can get in there. If that's a picture of the barn, that's from, almost standing on the river, looking up at at the existing building beyond and the sheds. So we'll be able to prevent, provide some at least images of the existing building and what design cues that will have for the new building. But some some pitch to the roof and some interest to the wall, I think this is. If you spend some time out there and look at it from the road, it's a thoughtful building and I think he'll do the same with the new building.
Isn't that a standard, something you need to approve as you move forward? Don't, I believe you'll need some design.
Yeah, I'm expecting Tom will be able to put some meat on the bones on that.
Okay, some elevations of it for the meeting. Okay.
The other thing, I think it's probably important to do a site walk.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. I think that's, you know, we should, maybe Rosie, if you want to take a vote of the board. On whether or not you should do a site walk, I think that's probably appropriate.
All right, okay, gentlemen, all those in favor of having a site walk for this project. And I'd like wave your hands so I can see. We've got yes for Jeff, yes for Mark. Yes for Ethan. Yes for Matt, who's gonna fly in specially. That's everybody. So I think that's a yes, and I definitely say yes.
All right, sounds good.
All right, so close to the river, we gotta be careful.
When, when would, when would you like to do that? I mean, I know Tom's really, you know, wants to get this project rolling, so. If it meets your criteria for approval, we should try to.
Tomorrow morning. I'll do it.
I mean, you know, the.
I could do.
Yes. All right, so here's the dilemma, and I wish I had a genie here. It's a public meeting.
Yeah, I forgot about that.
I mean, here's. An option, and I think it's legit, and Bill, maybe you can chime in if you don't like it. We could continue, it's just, I read back through the old minutes from the Coal Court Ab subdivision project and the board determined that for that project, the site visit that we had qualified as the public hearing, if you remember that. Let's not do that for this one, but if the board. Could continue this meeting. Until tomorrow. And then close the meeting tomorrow.
Jeremy, can you hear me?
I can. Thank you, Jeannie.
Okay.
I want to hear your thoughts on this.
I want to work around.
It should, it should be posted and noticed. This, it's usually sufficient notice at a public meeting for a site walk.
So are you, are you?
Kind of have, if you have a public hearing, it's not going to be as important that there's not a lot of time between this meeting and the site walk. If you don't, then the public's not going to get much notice.
So what about the morning of the next meeting that we, Phil presents to us?
So are you then envisioning two meetings for Bill? One after the site walk and then the follow-up?
We can do the site walk in the morning, then we have planning board that.
I mean, and then you're gonna approve it after your site walk? What if there's something comes up?
He's gotta come. Does he have to come back?
Tomorrow, if we could.
One, one more thought, the the building should actually be staked out. The driveway should be staked out. That's supposed to be part of what you look at at the site meeting. The trees that are to be removed, maybe marked, things like that.
Isn't that? Isn't that more of a requirement? That's more of a requirement under the required site visits, white, site walks for subdivision approvals.
Division. I think this one will be clear as to what's going on and Bill's pretty good at explaining stuff to us.
Jeannie, do you think it's legit for us to meet that requirement if we, and I tend to think it is, if the board continues this meeting, they decide tonight, they already approved, voted to approve a site walk. And they continue eating until tomorrow.
They even need to do that. They just adjourn a new meeting tomorrow morning.
Right, but we got to notice the public on a new meeting.
You are doing that right now.
Public, you noted.
Bill, are you comfortable with that?
I don't, well, let me also bring Tom in. If you have the authorization, Tom indicates that he's waiting to be let in.
Oh, really? I don't see him here.
I'd like to have him speak to it as well. Administratively, it sounds like it'd be, it'd be more streamlined to be just before the meeting. Unless there were significant changes. So that it's a little more defensible if somebody came out against the project. But if you can bring Tom in, that'd be.
I, Tom is not on my list of wanting to, waiting to come in.
Admin.
So Bill, you're coming back to us.
He just texted admin.
Billy, you're coming back to us, what, the fifteenth?
Admin's in already.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Is that you?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Did, were you able to listen to anything we've been talking about this?
I heard you.
Okay. What do you think about a site visit tomorrow?
Anytime you want.
Just to try to make sure we're moving this thing along, you know?
Sure.
Board, are you comfortable tomorrow morning?
Yeah, I'm listening to Bill too. I mean, if he wants to, you know, square some stuff away and then.
Sure. Yeah.
Well, you know, if Tom's ready, I was just pointing out and Tom can can hear it and react to it. It's more defensible for you long term if somebody came out in opposition to this project for it to have a longer duration. for it to have a longer duration of notification. Um, but I'm not.
That's a good point, Bill. It is.
I'm not the end of the line on that discussion. That is, that is, is your choice to some extent that you get to make.
We could.
I agree.
We could, Tom, we could, I guess, um, make a decision just to do it maybe next Monday morning and, and, and do a public notice posted in the town office. Or next, next week. I mean, Bill, are you thinking we've got, what I don't want to have happen is do a site visit the same day you're going for a final approval for the project?
Which would, we're trying to get there. We're trying to get there for the 22nd.
22nd?
That's, is that still on, Jeremy? That, that's the target date for the meeting?
I, I think that's the target date.
And we usually give the public two weeks and then that would give, if we did it the 15th, that would give Bill another week to, you know, wrap things up.
Bill, you have to Bill, you have to have a full application to me, what, 15 days before the 22nd or the, yeah, the 22nd?
Right, I, I had it down for Wednesday, the 7th.
That's correct.
So
Yeah.
So if we meet on the Monday? Well, if we, if we had a site walk on Monday, the 5th, that would give Bill two days to make any last tweaks he needs to make to get the final plan in. No?
I can do it. It depends on the time, but, you know.
Does that? Does that work?
Yeah, I just wondered about the notifying the public and giving them time.
We can put it on our webpage and, um,
We will post it in the town, in the town office tomorrow morning.
That's a full 24 hour, four hours in terms of business days. Is that enough notice for the public?
Generally not, but.
I mean, there's nothing in our zoning ordinance that speaks to how many days' notice for this type of meeting, I don't believe. Isn't that correct, Jeannie?
That's, that's correct.
Right. So.
It's still on the set.
It's not, it's not a public hearing. This is just a site visit. So Bill, everyone else is the 5th work at 9:00?
9:00 AM, sure.
Ethan?
That works for me. What was the time again?
9:00 AM.
And it's October the 5th? Oh, that's, is that Monday?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. No, I'm out of town. I should have spoke up sooner.
Let me as well. Yeah, what, what's your schedule?
I'm, I'm working.
Matt, you're working too?
Monday morning. I can do Tuesday though.
Tuesday? Yeah, I'm not back until, I'm not back until Wednesday night. But
Next Thursday.
How about Thursday morning?
Remember, we're still working, trying to work with, um, the 7th in order to have his full application in.
Sure.
Do we need Ethan there? I mean, that sucks because then he can't actually be part of the review meeting, can he, on the 22nd, if he's not at the site walk?
You need him. You need him to be able to participate.
You don't, yeah, but you don't have to be at the site walk. You can go visit the site on your own, can't you, Jeannie? I've done that before.
Yeah, if he reports back to the board, what he saw on his walk.
Yep.
Yeah.
I've done that before.
I'd be willing to, I'd be willing to do that. I don't want to stand in everybody's way of getting it, getting it going.
Bill, could you at least have, um, like, building location, staked out and kind of like maybe the tree removal shown for him or something like that? I mean, Ethan, I'd be willing to walk this, go with you and maybe Bill, if you have time, um, to do it when Ethan can do it, we can do it together and kind of you could go over what you go over with the board with Ethan. That way it's the same, everyone's getting the same information.
And I'd probably join you guys on that. I can't do Mondays, so maybe I'll join the two of you.
Does that sound good for everyone? I mean, it seems like it's every, each planning board member's getting the same information from the consultant, if Bill can do Thursday.
All right. Ethan, can you do Thursday morning on the 8th?
Yeah, Thursday should work for me.
Jeremy, can you do Thursday morning on the 8th for the second, for the little?
Thursday morning, of course I can.
It'd have to be, it'd have to be closer than, you know, nine or like 8:30 at the earliest.
That'd be great. I, if that works for you guys, then we can have our second round of that. Or does it just make sense, Jeremy, at that point, just to do everybody on Thursday morning or again, is the deadline?
I know, he wants to get his packet in.
I'd like to, I'd like Bill and Tom to be able to get their packet in on the 7th and, um, you know, the board's going to be able to see it. The three of you that are there are going to be able to see it and like provide some sort of comment. And I think, um, I, it just seems like that would be a good way to, so everyone can get the same information from Bill.
So Ethan, Thursday morning works for you, Mr. Shaw?
It does, yeah, as long as it's after 8:30, 8:30 or, or after.
Jeremy, can you do, you want to pick a time for us on Thursday morning for the second round?
9 o'clock. Bill Lane, does that work for you and Tom?
Yes, the 7th and the 7th.
Go break.
On the 8th.
8.
So you're proposing two walks, to be clear, one on the 5th at 9:00 AM and a second on the 8th at 9:00 AM. Is that correct?
That's correct. And, and I don't, the board could just, you know, the three of you, Mark, Rosie and Jeff, go on the 5th and that way Bill can then for sure finalize his plans to get in on the 7th and then we can just do a follow-up. Bill can go over the same exact stuff with Matt and Ethan on the 8th at 9:00 AM.
And thank you, Bill, for running through that a second time. Much appreciated.
Tom, thank you for, um, allowing that to happen.
You all, I really appreciate it.
And then now we need to set a date for the public hearing, so, um,
What, what's the time for that site walk?
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM?
Yeah, both of them.
Um, and just for everyone's, um, what we'll do is, if we're going to shoot for the 22nd, we need to set that as a, as a, as a, a date for the public hearing. If that's the case, we'll notify the public pretty well ASAP because the way we're doing these meetings is via Zoom. Um, and we want to make sure we can get enough feedback from the public. We'll get that as soon as, soon as we get that application in on the 8th, it'll go that we're having that public hearing on the 22nd. That'll go to everyone and that information will be available. Does that sound good for everyone?
Yes.
Now, that, you want to set, do you want to set that public hearing date on the 22nd or what do you want to do?
Who are you asking, Jeremy?
I'm asking you as the board.
Yes, I do.
Yes.
22nd.
Yeah.
Jeannie, does that sound good?
Yep.
Great. Bill, sound good.
Yeah, that'll work. Thank you.
You want to do a quick, just, uh, motion and second and a vote to say meeting, um, public hearing set for the 22nd, by 5 o'clock?
I move that the public hearing for this project be set for October 22nd, starting at 5 o'clock during planning board meeting.
I second that. Okay, all those in favor, can we get a hand wave please from the board? We've got one from, one from Mark, one from Jeff, uh, one from Matt, one from Ethan, and I'm giving myself one. So that's five zero unanimous for planning board public hearing about this project on the 22nd at 5:00 PM.
Awesome. Thank you. I'm trying to, um, hold on one second. All right, um, Bill, I think we're good. Tom, thank you, if you're still with us.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Jeremy.
Yep, no problem. See you next, uh, Monday.
Goodnight.
Thank you.